All virtual students who are here, but it doesn't have to be. Robert, Cindy, David, but then we also have our touch board president, Rob Pelster here, along with all our other speakers who are in the light.
Cindy Zellers?
Yes, Cindy.
I'm sorry, who sent me? Okay, thanks. Thank you so much for taking the time to put this on the agenda. So, the 21st century public library. Why do we care? What do we need to know? Here are some of the top 10 concepts that I put together. Am I not...
Is that there's your 21st century public library?
That's all we need.
Our screens are giving us very detailed...
I asked them a couple of weeks ago. Where's the virtual cable? Virtual...
They're saying...
So you're going to go to the hospital right away?
Well, I would say what you're doing is...
Yes, much better.
Okay, 21st century library concepts, top 10. There we go. My biggest hope for you today as...
About now. All right.
Great presentation, thank you.
Thank you. My biggest hope for you guys today as elected officials, city staff, volunteers, members of the public, is that you take away a better understanding of the 21st century library concepts for your decision making and the planning, the destiny of our city. Also, just for life. All the way from the Library of Congress to the Middleton Public Library, things are really changing and they've been changing fast. A quick look at the historical timeline of Middleton, which is also available on our website, shows six different iterations of the Middleton Public Library over time. From the 20th century to the 21st century, the biggest change that we see, as displayed on this little table right here, is that the 21st century library is really focused on people. The people and the connections is what makes and builds a library. The 20th century was very focused on the stuff and the things that we collect and preserve and put in libraries and the stuff that we lend out. The 21st century is focused on who uses that stuff. So, the top 10 concepts. These 10 all kind of fall into one of three categories. User X or UX, the facilities of the 21st century library, and then the services. That upper right-hand slide, the future for public libraries in the 21st century, that is a mandate that was put forth for the state of Wisconsin by Tony Evers through the DPI. This is something that we're talking about on an international, national, state, and local level. So, all of these three categories, this user X, the mind mapping, how does a person use the library even before they leave their house? How can we track that and evaluate that? The facilities, the services, they're all connected. Each of these concepts that I'm about to run through are all truly opportunities for us to incorporate into the design and the planning and the anticipation of not just the library, but how can we leverage that within other departments throughout our planning process? So, number one, the biggest concept is that libraries are more than books and literacy is more than reading. For a long time, libraries have been checking out other things besides books, DVDs, a ukulele, an American Girl doll. These things are not necessarily new, but we're seeing a huge resurgence through things like the Library of Things, partnering with Parks and Rec Departments to check out equipment, more than just books. And literacy really gets to the fact that the literacy of the future is really technology-based, but it's not just technology. It's things like trades. What is your literacy of trade? What do you need to be competent in to succeed in life? That literacy. Number two is place-making. This is, I know, not a new concept to city planners, but something that's interesting to talk about through the lens of a public library and what that can mean. In Minneapolis, established in 2013, there's a floating library. This idea was trademarked and has now started to pop up in other states, totally flipping the idea of what a library can be upside down. Kansas City Public Library, one of the most iconic facades in the world, this creates a very distinct experience and locks Kansas City into a level of authenticity, rather, that nobody else can compare themselves to. We know that that place is Kansas City Public Library. Things like Imagine On, Children's Library Theater in Charlotte, North Carolina, they have partnered up and do all kinds of really cool activities and really use their front plaza space in really interesting ways. Number three, mixed use, maybe one of the themes of the day. Sequoia, right up on Midvale, is one of our local examples of this. My hometown, Platteville, Wisconsin, just last year opened up a brand-new multi-block development project. King Library in Milwaukee is set to open up with 44 housing units. Cocona, Wisconsin, this is a really interesting one, an old paper mill right on the river, completely renovated, state-of-the-art 21st century public library, along with a focus on local history. Also with a focus on local history, and I kind of threw this one in for Abby because we've got a really cool projection here, is the Mission Branch in San Jose, California, also the home of the local area Historical Society, and they use the blank front of their facade to continually project images of the history of their community. Lots and lots of really cool things happening with mixed use. Economic impact. Back in 2014, the return on investment was $16. We're working to update some of those numbers across the state currently. In Middleton, we support entrepreneurs in a variety of different ways. We saw record numbers the last two years with our study rooms. People actually come to interview in secure jobs because they're able to use a free public space to interview. Really cool things with coworking happening across the country. Synergy, which is right up the street from us. Embedding coworking concepts into public libraries to support entrepreneurs and businesses is something that we're seeing a lot of, too. The maker movement, this is really fun. The How To Maker Fair at the Middleton Public Library, again, using the space that we have on the first floor, trying to think about new ways to utilize that, was a huge success. This is skills to skills, people teaching other people things that they know that they have to offer and to share. The Media Maker Lab, hugely popular, taught by a contractor who is also Brian Miles, one of the Middleton Cross Plains Area School District educators, does a fantastic job of teaching coding and tech skills to kids. This is filling a need in the community and we have waitlists every single week for these Partnerships and collaborations. Again, this isn't necessarily a new concept, but we're approaching things in a different way as public libraries. This bottom picture is the Greenway Station Kids' Day event in 2017, where we reached more than 500 people in partnering up with Greenway Station, and we're looking to make some improvements for this year. We've got things happening with the fire department, events like the United Way Day of Caring. Our outreach librarian, Amy Perry, does an amazing job of making those connections within the community, and we've attempted to really capture some of that with a brand-new website, Middleton Library, or sorry, midlibrary.org/outrage. This also doesn't even touch upon the things that we are currently doing with our school district, other libraries in Dane County, organizations and nonprofits like MOM. Number six has all to do with, or sorry, number seven has all to do with technology. 3D, does anybody know what VR or LS stands for?
Virtual Reality.
Yep, virtual reality, live streaming, and anything tech, tech, tech. We are lucky to have a tech genius on our staff who really helps to maximize and leverage our technology capabilities at Middleton, so much that we are really a leader in Dane County and in our South Central Library System when it comes to technology innovations like mobile self-checkouts. Virtual reality is something that we're anticipating for the future, and as we look to renovate spaces like the Archer Room, because we just simply cannot fit any more people safely into the lower-level meeting room, we're looking at live-stream options. How can you experience a library program from the comfort of your own home and still have that connection to your neighbors and your community using that flexibility with technology? Number eight, my favorite, space. Space is obviously huge, huge, huge. I put this idea box from Oak Park Public Library in Illinois because I really like this example because what it shows is how to rebound and create resiliency from a failure. This glass room here really started off as a coffee shop or a little café, and it didn't work. It totally failed. But instead of looking at it as like a failure, they decided to create the idea box where it just changes out, people can take it over, it's an interactive space, it's right in the entryway of the building, so it's always changing every time you visit. Vendors are responding to this 21st century library trend, especially some big local vendors like Demco, and they're creating things like mobile shelving and tessellated furniture. This is something that we definitely see demonstrated through some of our local schools like Cromory. And then I also included an example here of Chattanooga, Tennessee, which is called the Fourth Floor. As we look towards creating these really interesting and robust spaces that are flexible and colorful, that allow for expression of our culture and community, it's important not to underestimate the importance of a big, empty space. Chattanooga went through a major budget crisis back in 2009 and '10 and did some rearranging and found themselves with an entirely empty floor in their library that they didn't know what to do with. Since then, they've used it for pop-up spaces, maker spaces, building giant wind turbines, dance parties, fundraisers, you name it. The Fourth Floor has been branded, and now these librarians that have created this present all over the world on how to bring this concept to the local level. Other ideas or concepts that are really exciting happening right now is the Learning Commons. You'll see this talked a lot about in schools. Social and sharing spaces, auditorium and studio spaces. I included this picture of the digital yurts because I thought this was a really funny example of how everybody wants to be alone in public. And how do you do that when there's lots of noise? Well, you can literally create a cone of silence with a digital yurt. In Moline, Illinois, they've got a Black Spox Theater that also dubs as a programming space. And then the much anticipated Calgary Library in Alberta, which is set to open up in 2018, is the Mecca of a Learning Commons. Retail is a really popular concept right now. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. Bozeman, Montana, does it really well with a coffee shop and the Friends Bookstore. You can also go to Sun Prairie and some of the other Dane County libraries and kind of see the same concept in an entryway. It's often common to have that as one of the first things you see when you come into a building. And then, of course, nobody does consumerism and retail in a public space like Salt Lake City. They can shut different parts of the building down to create different types of access at different types of day, really creating a lot of flexibility there. Sustainability. This is probably one of my favorite things when it comes to talking about spaces. Sustainability is a huge focus for especially new library or library renovation and construction. King County just went carbon negative with a green roof. Library 21C, my old library in Colorado Springs, we took over the vacant National MCI Call Building Center, over 98,000 square feet that we retrofitted and turned into a 21st century library. Huge investment and impact on the community and also the district as a whole. Sydney, Australia, is set to open up this bad boy in 2018 with spiraling wood wrapped around the building. There will be childcare and there'll be a focus on supporting small businesses within the facility. And then this one, how could I not include a building made with ice cream buckets in Indonesia that was assembled with binary code and that a secret message into the facade? And no, I do not know what the secret message is. Minneapolis does a lot with biophilic design. How can we bring outdoor elements in and vice versa? Rooftop gardens in unexpected urban landscapes, and then translating that into building design through what you see on the ceiling here mimicking trees. Civic engagement as a concept. This also is nothing new to public libraries, but there's been a resurgence in the appreciation and the value of public libraries. Millennials read and consume more books than any generation before them, so the idea that the public library is no longer relevant because of the internet is false. And if you come to the Middleton Public Library, you will definitely see that that is not true whatsoever. We have an average of 30,000 people through the doors every single month, and we truly are the community connector and the access point. Never, or I shouldn't say never, but where else can an individual who perhaps has been incarcerated and is a felon, a senior citizen, a childcare provider with a young child, all go to receive the same equal opportunity and access as anybody else? It doesn't matter where you come from, where you've been, what your background is, who you are, everyone is welcome in the public library. So, even though the public library is open and welcoming to everyone, we all know that they actually are not free. They do cost a lot of money, and it's truly, truly an investment in our future. What's my train of thought here? We have been working really hard this last year to approach revenues at the library in a little bit different way and with a fresh perspective. We have an amazing Friends of the Library group. I have never worked in a library where we've had so much success with the Friends of the Library as a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The thing that makes this so special is that the Friends support 100% of the library programming that happens at the library. That's all based on donations. So, that means that this is truly programming for the people, by the people, paid for by the people, and that's pretty astounding. The Board just voted to join the South Central Library System Foundation as a way to increase our revenue with donations targeted towards facilities and collections. And then, of course, we have the Madison Community Foundation as our endowment, which provides the annual dispersment through lasting gifts, legacies, and planned giving. So, this doesn't even begin to touch the thing that's the most important about the 21st century library, and that is the library staff. I could do an entire another presentation on the 21st century library staffer and what it means to be a librarian in the 21st century. And it truly is one of the best things about working with the general public and for the general public is the people that help make it happen. Here's a couple others that didn't make it into the top 10. Things like drones, fandom, smart cities, robots. Urban resiliency is something that I worked with a lot within Colorado during wildfires. How can we leverage the library to support emergency services and natural disaster relief? These are all things that as we're planning for new trailheads and big apartment buildings, how can we leverage the library and these concepts to help make these things happen and add value? So, and this really hearkens to what we refer to as the 21st century library. So, library mindset. So, when we're talking about the 21st century library, it really is what we decide to make it, and that's really exciting. We can decide to prioritize and plan, and everything affects all of our community, and it's the equalizer and the connector and the expression of our culture. And so, when we think about what do we want to do with our public library into the future, we're really talking about how do we want to authentically be Middleton and what does this mean to us and to our neighbors? Some further resources for reading. This is a really fast introduction. We could have spent the entire day breaking something like this down. If you've got any questions, please let me know or you know where to find me. I don't know if we have time right now. Probably not, so, okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Now, Jocelyn didn't make one big announcement.
Now, Middleton Public Library, in terms of total circulation, is number one. It's the head of the Madison Central Library now and all other 57 libraries in seven counties. So, this just happened this year.
Wow. That is a really tough act to follow. Can I just ask? Next time, can I go before Jocelyn? And I knew it was going to be dynamite, but I also knew, I had a preview this week, one of my daughters took one of her daughters, who will be three in a couple months, to a library. And Hattie walks in and she says, "Mama, this is awesome." It's true. That was a great presentation. Let's just see if I can get to our, oh man, I didn't bring my glasses. I'll go get them. Sorry, sir, I'm looking to... Oh, well, see, we had, yeah, it's that one. I don't know if we're, okay. And where's the clicker? Thanks.
Lucky you.
We've been talking for a year or so about the idea of looking at and evaluating the potential for a civic campus to include things like whatever the needs are of the library, the senior center, tourism, city hall. And so, one of the things that we've, we're looking at is, oops. Yeah, we're going to just, sorry about that. I guess we just started, well, it's going to be another four hours. Everybody up, we'll send out for some sandwiches. Thank you, Bill. I wasn't even looking at that. Anyway, the idea of a civic campus and how do we go about deciding what should be in it? What's the process? So, just tried to lay out a few things. Won't take very long, but want to introduce it and the timeline. So, what's the purpose of it? To look at, identify, evaluate potential opportunities that exist to satisfy existing needs for all those city functions I talked about in buildings, and also future needs. But also look at, you know, what economic development opportunities exist. We heard earlier from David about a downtown property that got, you know, five offers in the first day. People want to be in the downtown, live and work in the downtown, or recreate or be at the library. So, what's the process to look at that? Develop a scope of work that would include parameters and goals that the city develops, and then prepare RFP to select an appropriate consultant. I think some of the things that we need to decide, and we had, let me just go back to there, oops, sorry, is what's the area that would be under consideration for that? What would we want to target and look at for a downtown civic campus? What are our goals of the city? What are we trying to create? And then what are some of the space needs of those individual components? The library's gone through a process, you know, we need to look at other functions, the senior center, the city hall, the planning department, just kidding. Some of the goals, I just listed these. I'd like them to come from the process that I'm talking about, but renewable energy, green roofs, other sustainable features. And then, obviously, economic development's huge. We want to look at what opportunities exist. Could there be public-private partnerships? Public art, potentially, and coworking space, maybe. And then what are we expecting as a city for those elements? Parking, what is our expectation? Urban amenities, and then also the public participation plan to encourage and facilitate public input. What would we want to be in an RFP that we want the consultant to work on? A configuration of enassing of city uses and space needs. Again, identifying the opportunities that exist for economic development and private development and a public-private partnership. Parking needs, that's huge. What do we need right now and what might we need in the future when we all have autonomous, or we use autonomous vehicles or hovercrafts? And then funding opportunities, can it be, you know, what portion of it could potentially be TIF for the private-public partnership and economic development? What sustainable features are doable and viable? And then urban design features, and then the public participation. So, I put together the timeline thinking that the spring, we're going to be busy, hopefully adopting our comprehensive plan update. So, we're looking at May this year through March of next year for city committees and commissions to make recommendations to the council for the goals and the parameters or expectations for that civic scope of work or civic campus. And then, a little over a year from now, issue the RFP, by the end of 2019, select a firm, and then have that work done in '20 and '21. And then that brings us to the potential for actually creating the civic campus and funding, and I think, Bill, are you going to mention that or?
I didn't have a slide for it.
Just to lead into the future meeting, talking about long-term financial plans, we do know, and we've talked at some levels about existing debt service that the city has, and around the mid, like, 2025 range is when some of the city facilities will have debt that's falling off. It'll be good to start a planning process and know what might be coming for the future, even if it's still several years out, because we can start making decisions now with our borrowing and our financial planning that'll set us up for what we may want to do with a civic campus in the future. And there may also be some other options that we could look at if we wanted to get something started a little sooner than that timeframe. So, I guess the point is just it'll be good to know what our goals are and what the potential is, that we can start planning for it now for any major project in the future.
So, you have any questions about the process or the idea of a civic campus?
One thing that mentions TIF, expenditure grid.
Oh, that's true. Right. Assuming that we are able to use TIF for a portion of it, the private development portion or public improvement needs, we do have to end our expenditures in 2025. Actually, I think it's, I looked it up one day, I think it's the exact day that you create it, and I think that's September 15th. So, September 15th, 2025, we're done spending money. So, whatever we need to do, we hope to do that in the two or three years or four years, whenever we can start spending money before that.
So, we could possibly also get some major grants. I don't think we'll get four, five, $10 million, but could we, there would be an opportunity for that?
Well, I think that's part of what we would ask our consultant to look at is for whatever components might be eligible for grants, you know, what grants are out there. I think that depends on, you know, what is being proposed. I'm not sure if there would be.
Fundraising.
Fundraising would be one of the things.
So, where could we use the debt money? Could we use some part of it, all of it, or some of it?
Well, you know, TIF is, and Matt can correct me or these guys, it can be used for public improvements typically if it's leading to economic development, or it can be used for economic development incentives. It can't be used for a public building, so. But that's part of what we would want, part of the process is what are all the funding opportunities? TIF is a portion of it, but we know what else exists in capital, and like Mike said, fundraising.
So, what if we had a coworking space? So what if we had a coworking space and like, yeah.
Those are the kind of things that, the kind of things that Jocelyn was talking about, give us opportunity for looking at the library as an economic development engine along with whatever civic campus generation of activity that we can do for economic development purposes. We've talked about structured parking that's available for the general public, that helps to solidify the commercial interest in the downtown as being an eligible cause, and there may be sustainable features as well that could be funded through TIF because it's in our project plan. And so there's a variety of things that we can consider. And when we look at the debt service dropping off after 2025, if we can modify whatever costs there are through the use of TIF, through library fundraising activities, through private investments in the same kind of development, then it merits for us to be doing the planning for that now, and that's the whole purpose of this discussion.
So Mike, isn't the other part of it beyond TIF is that there could be a consolidation of what our footprint looks like, and that could open up developable parcels that we haven't had in the past?
Absolutely.
We could take up a lot of property, don't we?
There could be a mix of housing above the development or adjacent to, coordinated with, the private, or the structured parking as well.
But I really, I really like what Jocelyn was saying about, you know, not thinking about this as just a library, it's really this.
Civic campus.
This really, this civic campus, but then thinking about what things do you want in that, that now we have in separate locations, and how that, how do you bring that together and then really maximize our opportunity?
How you can figure it.
Yeah.
But picking up on that, there is also the notion, I would hate to think that we're just talking about the narrow definition. Sorry, not on? Now on? No? Okay. That we're not talking just as the narrow definition of the urban, of the civic campus, that the broader plan for the downtown area, if that was in place now, the decision about the downtown park, whether that's the right place for it or not the right place for it, would have been made for us, right? So when we think about the RFP, I hope it's not just restricted to the narrow definition of the civic campus plan.
I think that's a good point, and that's why I listed urban amenities, because what else can be accommodated or should be accommodated in this area?
Yep.
And knowing that, I think we probably think of accelerating the timeline. I think there are a lot of needs.
Accelerating it to.
Accelerating the timeline.
Accelerating it to plan it or to.
Yeah, make it earlier, yes.
And we can work on it.
I think 2020, 2020 to 21 is a pretty good timeline to strive for, so that we could get to that point and say, this is all TIF-eligible, this isn't, we need to fundraise for this portion, we need to look at eventual city debt obligation for this portion. And then if we have that by 2020, 2021, we can move forward, try to keep the councils, not try to, keep the council's goal of a flat debt service over time so that we aren't raising taxes for this major public improvement.
Any other questions before we adjourn?
Before you adjourn, because I gotta get to my desk to write down who did the motions, but I just want to, I just want to, oh, good, thank you. I just want to thank everybody, and I know Mike's already done that, too, but to give up a Saturday morning, but it's just, you know, so fun, and we hear a lot of things, and thank you very much for being willing to be here for it. And the breakfast was great, by the way. Yay, Oprah.
And before you do adjourn, I just wanted to ask, because since I've got all of you in the same room, I've been looking at dates for a spring bus tour, and May 19th looked really good for our staff. You could take a look at your own schedules and see that's a Saturday morning, see if you could fit that into your schedule as well. I think it's a great way for us to take public officials around, review the projects that are in process, and potential projects as well. And then secondly, Bill and I have been talking about, we even talked about possibly including it here, and we just didn't have enough time, is for the council, a five-year financial plan. And there is a fifth Tuesday in May, which is the Tuesday after Memorial Day, and that might be an opportunity for us, again, if you could take a look at your schedule and see if that, that would work. Joanna said she's going to be in Germany, we're all about to go. That's May 29th. So I'll follow up with emails on both of those, but I figured while everybody's here, get it out there.
Okay, any other motions from Plan Commission or adjourn?
Some move.
I'll go to the favor say aye.
And a motion from council?
Some move.